Six o'clock. Welcome tonight to the Planning Commission Joint Public Meeting with for hearings for Town Council. After the joint public hearing with Town Council, we go into our normal Planning Commission meeting agenda item, which covers the same subject. So that's the format for tonight. So I call to order our meeting tonight. Planning Commission, roll call, please.
Ashworth, present.
McDonald, present.
Holloway, present.
White, present.
We have a quorum in Town Council.
Roll call, please.
Markell, present.
Peter, present.
Holloway, present.
Grossen, present.
Mayor and staff of the forum.
All right. If we can please rise for a moment of silence and then I'll pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next item, I'd ask for a motion to approve our consent agenda.
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, the next agenda is the public hearing and I'll just give a pre-description there. It's zoning text amendment 2024-01. It's an application from the town of Cape Charles to add new regulations for short-term rentals as permitted use in certain identified zoning districts and establishes the criteria for operation of a short-term rental. Sections that will be discussed is section two, which deals with definitions, section three deals with our individual districts, section four are ordinances that apply across the board in that particular area, and that's where we'll end up adding a new section 4.12 Short-Term Rental Regulations. And again, as I said, at the conclusion of the public hearing, Town Council adjourns their meeting and they can depart at that time should they wish. So before we get into the actual public hearing, we have a presentation by Town Staff, which I'll ask for now.
Thank you. Just to give a little background on this, which was in your staff report in the packet, this is actually a topic we have been working on for almost a full two years. To put this in some perspective, it was on the Town Council's strategic priorities list on March 2nd, 2023. It was there in 2022 as well. It just was not in the top 10 items that got tackled that year in 2022. It finally moved up to the top of the list in '23. And with that, the Town Manager convened an ad hoc work group to assist in researching the short-term rental issues. This committee worked to develop that list of issues and possible means of addressing said issues and brought this forth to a joint work session of the Town Council and Planning Commission on November 2nd, 2023. The intent of the work from the ad hoc committee was to develop solutions to protect and preserve the town's sense of community while recognizing the STRs and their economic benefits, and two, to address the stress in the town's infrastructure, water and sewer capacity, space on the beach, parking on the streets, et cetera. At this meeting, there was input received, additional information was requested from the Town Council members and Planning Commissioners, and continued tasks were assigned to the Town Manager and the ad hoc committee to continue working on proposed regulations. From that meeting, it came back up again on April 29th of 2024, where a town hall meeting was held that involved the Town Council and the Town Manager to solicit public input and comment on the issues of short-term rentals and the issues identified through the work of the ad hoc committee and the possible solutions being considered. We had in attendance that night well over 100 members of the public, as well as broadcast on the town website via Facebook, which had more than 100 views that particular evening. Roughly a few months later, on June 13th of 2024, the Town Council received a presentation by the Town Manager of this work of the committee and the draft proposals developed as a result of all of these community meetings that had been held. As we walked through that, we realized some of the proposals would require a zoning text amendment and others would require amending certain sections of the town code. Town Council, after having a review of all of that proposed language and verbiage, indicated what items were supported by the majority of the council members and what items did not achieve consensus. This continued with the next update at the council meeting on August 8th of 2024 with a detailed review of what would be the proposed zoning ordinance text amendment, as well as the town code amendments. At that time, they received consensus support to move this out to public hearing and to submit it to review by our town attorney, thus resulting the document you have before you at this point in time. So with that said, I'd like to go over that document very briefly if I could. We do have a PowerPoint. This really is a summary overview of a zoning text amendment. We actually refer everyone to look back to that ordinance. It is posted on our website, reviewing by the public at large. There are hard copies available in the town hall if anybody wishes to come and review it and see it there as well. With that said, we're proposing that we remove a few definitions of removing dwelling seasonal and actually substituting in a definition for operator and a definition for short-term rental. I'm going to focus on the short-term rental so everybody's clear what that is. It's the provision of a room or space that is suitable or intended for occupancy for dwelling, sleeping, or lodging purposes for a period of fewer than 30 consecutive days in exchange for a charge for the occupancy. This does not include a hotel, motel, or bed and breakfast. Additionally, we are seeking to add this use of short-term rental as a byright accessory use in the following zoning districts. It won't be in every zoning district that's in our ordinance, but these are the ones that would be placed into. Again, in our printed document, I typed 4.15. It really is 4.12 is the new section numbering. So I apologize for that error in the hard copies. But with that said, we're looking to add this as a byright accessory use, assuming it meets the criteria outlined, into the R1, R2, R3, CR, C1, C2, C3, and the Harbor District. I am referencing the Bay Crossing Plan Unit Development, or the Bay Crossing PUD, just because when that was adopted most recently in the last year, that was a specifically created PUD that indicated by the applicant that it would not have short-term rentals occurring in the PUD. And so we just needed to have that be reflective again in this document now that we are adding a definition and verbiage of short-term rentals.
Well, can I clarify that? That's true, but we allowed it the conditional under a CUP, a conditional use permit.
Thank you.
Okay.
It's just not a byright use.
Correct.
Yes. We are also cleaning up in two other spots in our ordinance where we have some of our older verbiage there. We're taking that out. So under the section of accessory dwellings of 4.2J, which falls under the general regulations, we are deleting all the verbiage we would put in there relative to transient occupancy, which was a stopgap measure from a couple of years ago as we worked our way through this particular issue. So we are striking all of that language at this point in time. And also under our off-street parking and loading standards, we are tweaking the one parking regulation used where it indicated bed and breakfast, other temporary residences renting by the day or week. We are striking that, the back half of that clause. So we are adding this whole new section, which is really the criteria for what's required for a short-term rental. So we're looking to accommodate, our purpose of doing this is to accommodate STR owners in a limited commercial use in a way that is safe for the guests, meets town requirements, does not change the character of the town, and fits in with the districts in which the STRs operate. It would work in tandem with the town business license requirements. One of the issues that we felt was necessary to address at this point in time was to provide a period of time in which compliance would be achieved, both from the public's perspective and from the internal staffing and ramping up of the necessary services, equipment, software, staffing potentially, to address these requirements. So we are giving a one-year grace period to come into compliance with the new requirements from the date the zoning ordinance may be adopted by Town Council. So what are the permitting requirements to operate an STR? Again, everybody still must receive an annual business license as is required today, and that is obtained through the Finance Department. Must retain, must obtain an annual safety inspection by the building official. And lastly, the new item is the STR shall not operate until an STR zoning permit is issued by the Planning and Zoning Department. So what are the components that make up these? Again, the annual business license is dictated through the town code of Chapter 18, Article 2. It is overseen by the Finance Department. They are making some slight tweaks to that article in reflection of this proposed STR zoning ordinance coming forward, and that item will be taken up by the Town Council at their meeting in November. From the safety inspections conducted by the building official, again, the biggest change will be it will be required for all STRs from every zoning district that we have outlined, which will include Bay Creek, will be required for all STRs to have an initial safety inspection. There will be an annual reinspection required by the code official when filing for their renewal of their STR permit. The building code official will also have the right to go do a reinspection if there's deemed to be any complaints or reasonable suspicion to verify that the rentals being operated in accordance with the Virginia Uniform Statewide Building Code, as well as the STR zoning permit and any other applicable laws and regulations. Some of the things that he will be looking at are the safety equipment, the operable smoke detectors, fire extinguishers, carbon monoxide detectors, that they shall be present and in compliance with the Uniform Statewide Building Code. He'll also be ensuring that there are lights on stairwells and entrances and egresses is safe and free of furniture and things of that nature are all part of his safety review when he is on site. Again, revisions to this town code section will be taken up at the Town Council at their November 21st, 2024 meeting. What's going to be in the new zoning permit for STRs? Same, very similar information you're going to be providing in your business license. There are going to be a couple of additions. So yes, the name of the owner and operator of the STR, the address of the STR, the town business license that you have provided when getting your business license from the Finance Department. We are making people aware that operators that are a lessee or sublesssee, we need an attestation from the property owner that permission has been granted to use the property as an STR. We would want to have contact information for all the owners, operators, and property management companies, if applicable, involved with that STR. We want contact information, which will be available 24/7 for the responsible party to address immediate concerns associated with an STR, and who has the authority to act as the owner and operator's agent. Lastly, if they are governed by homeowners or condominium association, we want proof that authorization to operate the STR was provided by those organizations. Also required for your zoning permit STR is the need to submit the transient occupancy tax to the Finance Department as required under Town Code, Chapter 18, Article 5. STRs will only be in the permitted districts that are outlined in the zoning ordinance. STRs under, skip the, yeah, I did skip one. Thank you, I'll come back to it. STRs under separate contract in the same dwelling are not permitted, meaning you cannot have two different weekly tenants coming in for that week to rent one half of the house and the other half of the house. It can only be under one contract. Occupancy greater than 10 must get a conditional use permit contingent upon house having more than five qualifying bedrooms. The property can accommodate sufficient off-street parking and property meets any other life safety requirements due to higher occupancy. I skipped a slide, so I'm going to back up one. Permits shall be valid for one year. Any changes on the permit application will require notification to Planning and Zoning Department within 10 business days. If there is a change in property ownership, it shall require a new permit application within 20 business days. The owner can only operate up to five STRs within the town. Not prohibited from offering property as an STR solely based on lessee or sublesssee. Business license and emergency information must be posted inside each rental, including a 24/7 contact information for the STR owner. Occupancy excluding children five years or younger, there shall be no more than two lodgers per room, with the number of overnight lodgers being no greater than 10. Please keep in mind, again, that means that we are not counting children five years or younger in setting that occupancy limit of 10. Again, as we've referenced, occupancy greater than 10 must get a conditional use permit, and there are criteria that we will have to consider, as we just referenced, to apply for and be considered for that conditional use permit. Lastly, commercial gatherings, including luncheons, banquets, parties, weddings, charitable fundraisers, commercial or advertising, et cetera, are prohibited within the STR. The final components, they would have to be compliance with our signage regulations that are contained in zoning Article 4, Section 4.1. There are also requirements associated with refuse and the need potentially to get a second refuse container from the town pursuant to Town Code, Chapter 24. Again, those sections are being taken up at the Town Council meeting on November 21st. And they have already made the changes, so they're already in existence, noise requirements that are on the books today under Town Code, Chapter 20, Article 1, Section 20-3. They would have to be in compliance with those in the operation of any STRs. What happens if you don't do all these things? So we do have a whole section in this zoning ordinance that deals with the process for violations, and what are those violations? I'll go through process first. So when a complaint is received by the town, there would be an investigation. It depends on what the complaint is about. It will depend upon which agent or agency within the town operations would do the investigation. So for example, if we receive an individual nuisance or noise violation, that will be issued, investigated by, most likely, the police would be responding to that as a noise complaint. And then if they found that to be inaccurate, they would issue it to the party who was creating the noise. That could be your tenant, or it could be the owner of the property. Whoever is the one making that noise would receive that violation. Again, as I referenced, it depends on who is, what the issue is, it will depend on who gets the chance to investigate. It could be the Town Manager, it could be the treasurer, it could be the zoning administrator, the building code official, the police chief, or their designees, as appropriate. Again, once investigated, any violations that are found to be accurate and in violation of this ordinance, those will move over to the zoning administrator, who typically holds the process for dealing with zoning violations, and that will move through its process at that point in time. We will provide a notification out to the property owner what the violation is and provide them 24 hours to rectify that violation. If that is not rectified in those 24 hours, then it does start a formal violation process that we will put in place, which is us giving written notice to the short-term rental owner or operator that contains the following information: a description of the violation constituting the basis of the denial, suspension, or revocation of the STR zoning permit; a statement of the acts necessary to correct the violation. So if you couldn't correct in that 24 hours, you're going to have one more opportunity to, with a limited period of time, to correct the violation. If that correction does not occur, we will also notify your rights. If it fails to still be an ongoing open violation, you will have the right to appeal the notice of the permit denial within 30 days in accordance with the Code of Virginia, Section 15.2-2311A, and that the decision of the permit denial shall be final and unappealable if not appealed within 30 days. So basically, I would issue the letter saying there's a notice of violation, here are the issues that are wrong, and that they haven't been corrected in this fashion, then your zoning permit will be revoked. There is a slight little condition I'm coming to on the revocation, because with that, we actually will not revoke it right away. We will actually hold off its revocation for the subsequent calendar year. So you can continue to have any contracts you have engaged into and entered into in this calendar year. I'm going to pick on 2025, because that's what we're coming into. You would still be able to hold, maintain those contractual obligations you have made to tenants coming in, but come 2026, if you were found to be in violation and it held all the way through, and you did not appeal that decision either, then that would stand, and come 2026, you would not be able to receive a STR zoning permit for the entire calendar year 2026. So what could be some of the violations you could incur under your STR zoning permit? We've got a whole list of them, everything from failure to obtain and maintain a town business license, you didn't pay all your real estate property taxes, you didn't pay all your business taxes associated with this business of short-term rental, you did not pay the payment of the transient occupancy taxes due to the town, and we've given a period of three prior months or more, falsifying town forms or applications, and potentially other applicable town zoning violations, such as sign ordinances would be one of those examples, failure to provide responsive actions to issues raised to the 24/7 contacts as determined through town investigations. So again, if your management company, who is your 24/7 contact, did not respond in a timely fashion as they are required to do, that could be one of the reasons that you receive a violation under this permit. If you had two or more violations of safety building code requirements within the same calendar year that have not cured for the following notices as outlined by the building official, two or more violations of occupancy limits within the same calendar year that are not cured following reasonable notice. Again, as I've already stated, if those are the penalties that are found to be true through this investigation that was conducted by the town, again, the penalty is you would not have a renewal of your zoning permit for STRs for the prior calendar year. At that point, then we need to apply for a new business license, STR zoning permit, and an inspection following the conclusion of the one-year suspension. So this basically outlines all the parameters of what is in this proposed zoning ordinance for your consideration this evening.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
With that, I'm going to open up then public hearing to those that have signed up, and then we'll follow it with those who have written in. So if you want to sign up and speak, please do so now. All right, so for those that are coming up to speak, I'm looking for your name, your address, and then you can make your statement, and your comments are directed to the Planning Commission in Town Council. It's not to be turned around and talked to the public. Your comments are directed to us, so please keep that in mind.
Three minutes.
And three-minute limitation, so make it concise, and we'll go from there. Our first person?
Donna Olmecoller.
Donna.
Good evening. Donna Olmecoller, 711 Tazewell Avenue, also the Fig Street Inn. I have a whole statement prepared, but saw the presentation, I'm very impressed. Just my only comment at this point is I do believe that all short-term rentals, regardless of their zoning, should go through a conditional use permit processing. I have to do that for my bed and breakfast. I've talked to you all about this many times before, as well as the Town Council. There's a lot of regulations that I need to go to in order to maintain my business in the R1 district, and I believe that short-term rentals, I'm very impressed with the proposal here, but I think requiring everyone to do the CUP versus the byright would be the most manageable, excuse me, the most appropriate way to manage the short-term rental question. Thank you.
Walter Bronson.
Good evening, everyone.
Address?
Sorry.
Address.
515 Tazewell Avenue.
Thank you, thank you. You failed the first step there.
Sorry. I will second what she just said, but I want to start off with, it came to my attention in reviewing this, that the current zoning ordinance does in fact require one off-street parking space per bedroom for what's called tourist homes, but is the same thing as short-term rentals. I don't know that that's been enforced. I don't know that there's been a method without requiring an approval process to enforce it, but I do understand that we're now striking that from the ordinance, and I don't know that that's really appropriate. I think that the same conditions that apply to the bed and breakfast should also apply to the short-term rentals. Parking has obviously been a major topic of discussion here lately, and short-term rentals do exacerbate that problem. It really only takes one problem unit, block, to really create that problem for everyone in that area. So I would ask you to consider keeping that, and maybe we can find a way to enforce it. New ordinance 412B6 proposes to limit short-term resident ownership to five. You know, we've heard kind of repeatedly that the short-term rental owners are those people that bought a house and they can't really afford to move here yet, but they want to move here eventually, so they're ready to get out so they can pay their mortgage until they can come to town. Well, somebody that's got more than one house obviously doesn't fit in that category. They have other motives for owning properties in Cape Charles, and I would say that they're probably not as invested in Cape Charles as people that do live here, people that do intend to move here. And I would suggest that maybe that number needs to be something less than five. I've seen a lot of other ordinances where it's three, so I prefer to see it as something less than that, but five seems like a large number to me. New ordinance 412C1 deals with payment of transient occupancy tax. We've also heard that payments to the town come in lump sum from the OTO and Airbnb, and there's really no way for the town to know whether or not the individual short-term rentals.
Just three minutes.
Elise Biggman.
If, you know, I will pass this out, and there are some sections in bold here that you can take a look at.
Go ahead, ma'am.
Hold on, hold on, let's wait till it gets... Hold on, hold on, just a second, Elise. Okay, continue, Elise.
My name is Elise Biggman. I live at 304 Tazewell Avenue. I have concerns about short-term rentals becoming a byright use in the R1 zone. Apart from the fact that it's not really clear to me how the town has had the authority to permit these in the R1 zones leading up to this, I've been reflecting on the town hall, and many of the points people made in the town hall resonated with me. I grew up at the Virginia Beach oceanfront, and part of being a local is knowing the secret beach spots, finding the restaurants where you can dine in at a barken, and the trade-off for being inconvenient for a few months out of the year is that you get to live in a place where others save up all year to visit. What I don't agree with is the sentiment that residents seeking to regulate short-term rentals are inherently in opposition to those who make a living here off tourism. I don't think... I don't think this is a black and white issue. In fact, I'm a regular at most of these establishments year-round with the exception of the Cape Charles Center gift shops. The question I ask you to consider is this: What do full-time residents who do not own a local business or a short-term rental gain from short-term rentals apart from their property assessments and subsequently their real estate taxes going up? In Virginia Beach, you know, we have some of the best public schools in the country. So also, please realize that not everyone treats Cape Charles as a financial investment and celebrates their property values going up. My house has been in my family for four generations, and I have no intention of selling it. So all this talk about wanting young families and people to move here, well, here I am, and I hope you hear my concerns, and seriously consider what families like mine would gain from short-term rentals if we don't have a short-term rental and we don't depend on the tourism economy to make a living. I don't wish to threaten my neighbors to make a living this way. I simply request the same level of consideration that something would be done for those members of the community who, as it stands now, are only losing money as a result of unregulated short-term rentals. Thank you.
Ed Wells.
Hi, Ed Wells, 202 Strawberry Street.
Can you speak up into the microphone?
Planning Commission and town council members, Mayor, John Holliday. I'm just going to make some observations that I'd like to bring up. STRs go back to at least 2017 that I can see back. I'm just wondering why it took so long? What does it mean, limited commercial use in residential areas in R1 zoning? And I don't know if you mentioned that these STRs can have business liability insurance? I know when I had a business, I had to have business liability insurance. How are we going to enforce occupancy limits? Is there going to be a code enforcement officer? And that's pretty much all I have to say. Thank you.
Laura Wagen.
Hi, good evening. Laura Wagen, 632 Madison Avenue. And I just want to commend you guys. I think this is a great first step. I was very impressed with the presentation. I also just wanted to, a couple of things that kind of triggered some of my thinking was the importance of definitions. Like, when it said the violations, like, what is the response time, the 24-hour, 24/7 response time? And I'm speaking as the localish right now. Like, what is considered the perfect, or whatever, response time? And who would be calling? Are you getting a call from the police, the town, a neighbor? Just like, what do you consider, which one of those calls would be constitutional for violation? Parking issues, somebody brought that up, and I still feel like that is an issue. I feel like permits should be allowed for residents and limited for short-term rentals. I know there's a lot of work to be done there. Somebody also brought up, I don't remember who it was, that said that top tax being paid by verbo and Airbnb, and yes, that's true. However, every month, you still have to file with the town your top tax, and the county is quarterly. So that should be a violation too, if the owners or management company, I don't control finances for the houses that we manage, because we're just a co-host, but I always remind them, hey, you need to file your top report and just show this is what you made, and this is who's paying, whether it's verbo, Airbnb. That's very important. I think a lot of owners think they don't have to do it since it's being paid, but I know the town needs to know where the money's coming from, or it won't get credited to your house. And then the insurance issues. Yes, every short-term rental should have business insurance, and I feel like it should be, it should be online somewhere, so you can see, make sure that your neighbor has fire insurance or whatever, especially when it's a business. And that's just kind of some of the thoughts that came up, but otherwise, I'm impressed. Thank you.
Mark Essery.
Thank you. Mark Essery, 117 Strawberry Street. And full disclosure, for a number of years, I was one of those people who bought a house and needed to rent. I had two kids in college, and I retired here, I do it half or full-time, but I've been part of the community since 1996. I think this is a great first start, or first swipe at the issue. A couple of things that I think were possibly not included, but my compliments to those who spent the time and effort to put this together certainly. It concerned me about the off-street parking requirement that's being deleted. One of the major issues that the public brought up was the parking problems, and I don't see that being resolved in this unless we assume that the occupancy limits are going to impact parking problems. I'm not sure it will. May we look to see about that? But I think that the parking issue needs to be addressed. I still believe that there ought to be some designation of a parking place, at least one, in front of every house that goes to the owner of that property, to make sure that people can park somewhere in front of their house or near their houses. And the only other comment I have was the violations. I know that when I was a landlord and had some tenants, essentially a tenant, there was a 24-hour violation and 30-day violation. And we knew what those were, we had people on call, and so I think a distinguishing of what types of violations are 24 hours of safety versus 30, which is a little longer to get the plan. It is a little bit complicated to get workers here on the eastern shore at some time to get things accomplished. So thank you.
George Proto.
Good evening. George Proto, 607 Pine Street. First of all, I think this is a good start. I think that it still needs more work. I don't have a whole lot of comments, but the first thing I want to say is I strongly agree with the need to issue conditional use permits for short-term rentals, rather than having this be a by-right situation. The other thing that I'm concerned about that I think needs to be addressed is enforcement and consequences. So, for example, do you have fines of occupants for violation of noise? And would it be for the renters, or would it be for the owner? And how does the owner control that? And by the way, if you're going to be measuring, if you're going to be fighting for noise or providing violations for noise, you need a way to measure that. I think you need to talk to Jim Krulik about this, because this is not an easy thing to do, because you may be taking to court about that, but you need to do it, it needs to be controlled. And then finally, a little more on consequences. It may be useful to consider graduating consequences, because as I look at it, and again, I'm seeing this for the first time, I'll give a little bit more detail later, but as I look at it, there's either nothing, or there's you can lose your permit. And what I'm thinking is maybe you need to graduate the consequences for violations. Maybe you need a fine for the first time. Maybe you need a much bigger fine for the second time, and eventually then the person loses their permit. In my opinion, having it be either all or nothing means that it is a lot less likely that someone will suffer consequences, because they'll find a way to fix things one way or another, or they'll be given a bye life. I agree with a lot of the other comments that were made before. I'm glad you all are working on this. I don't think you're there yet, I don't think we're there yet, but I think this is a start. Thank you very much.
Nancy Proto.
Nancy Proto, 607 Pine Street. I think George and I have been married too long. I did want to mention that the parking, there was a lot of information. First of all, I want to thank you all for all that you do. I know I've been on the other side of the table in the door, and I know it's a lot, even if you don't all agree, it's a thank you for your service to this community. There was a lot of information, and I'm not sure I understood all of it completely, but I wanted to just make a couple of comments relative to some things that sort of stood out to me. And one is the bathroom parking. And it seemed to me that the statement was vague. It said that if there are a certain number of people living in the house, or occupancies or bedrooms, that they need to have adequate parking to be able to accommodate that number of people. And to me, that sounds like it could be vague, because I, you know, what's considered adequate? That can be up for interpretation, and I would suggest that you put something more specific in there, in terms of a number, not simply what is considered to be adequate to accommodate. The other question I also had was relative to the consequences of these violations. I understand not paying taxes, not safety issues not being addressed, those kinds of things are specific to the owner and need to be addressed, and it may take 24 hours to respond or to act or to do something about it. But for other softer, maybe not softer, but other, you know, situational violations like a noise ordinance, if you have a tenant and they decide their last night of vacation, let's have a party, and they violate the noise violation, well, they have 24, and it's specific to the person making the noise, well, 24 hours to go on. So it seemed to me that some of the violations would be tenant-specific and could be rendered moot simply because they've left. So I don't know if those kinds of violations could be deferred to the owner of the property, that if your tenants, you know, week after week, even if they're different tenants, are violating noise violations or any other violation that is considered undesirable to the neighbors or unsightly to the neighbors, that it'd be cumulative, that you're not, you're not communicating information effectively to your tenants about what is required. So I would like to see, again, in the interest of there being some consequences, that if you have an ongoing issue like that, that it'd be addressed to the owner and not necessarily to the tenant or to the vacationer, simply because they're the ones creating the problem. That's it. Thank you.
Good evening. Sorry, I don't have a bunch of weights that I'm going to be first meeting. Mary Shackelford, 527 Jefferson Avenue. Thank you for scheduling this meeting and allowing all the town's homeowners to provide some input on this important topic. The zoning ordinance changes that are currently proposed regarding STRs are, for the most part, a continuation of the existing requirements for STRs. There are, however, five areas of concern that I want to address. Number one, the requirement of publicly available information and contacts for all owners and agents. This seems to be a needless requirement, as all enforcement of the new regulations will be handled by the town as laid out in the zoning amendment. So why would anyone need to be able to contact me as an owner other than the town? It's not that I have a problem with my neighbors having my phone number or contact as they do. Rather, this would seem to empower members of the community to become a watchdog group to try to enforce some portion of the regulations. If there are violations observed, community members should call the town, not me. If it is a legitimate issue, the town will follow through with the procedures listed in the zoning amendment. Number two, the requirements regarding age and occupancy. The use of the age of five as a number to be considered part of the occupancy will severely limit the number of families who can visit Cape Charles. The house with four bedrooms frequently has a bunk room. This bunk room provides a great sleeping space for children as old as 12 to 16 to enjoy vacation together. Cousins, friends, and family often enjoy the opportunity to spend a week camping together in the bunk room of these houses. Taking away this opportunity seems to serve no purpose. None of these occupants will drive a car, so parking is not an issue. Why would not an age of 16 not be more important, as it could possibly bring another car to the parking? I would ask you to consider changing the age to 16 for consideration in the occupancy count. Number three, the use of two lodgers per bedroom would also hurt families wishing to rent rooms in town. Again, many families count on the bunk room as a way to allow children to enjoy with their families and friends during vacation. I would suggest that amendment be changed to allow up to four beds and a bunk formation in one room. Number four, trash receptacle requirement. As an STR, I always get an extra trash can during the busy season, May to September, but requiring this during the off-season is simply not needed. I have very few, if any, rentals during that time, so the cans all sit empty and I am still paying for the one. I would suggest the two receptacle requirements be adjusted to a specific period. Raphael Allen, 504 Plum Street. I am writing to express my concerns about the proposed regulation limiting short-term rental occupancy to two persons per bedroom. While I understand the importance of maintaining order and safety in our community, I believe this proposal will have unintended consequences that could severely impact our local economy, residents, and homeowners. Our town thrives as a family-oriented vacation destination, with the vast majority of visitors being families seeking to enjoy our unique environment. A strict two-person-per-bedroom limit would be overly restrictive and out of touch with the very nature of our vacation market, where multiple-generation families and multiple families often travel together. This policy would drastically reduce the availability, affordability, and attractiveness of short-term rental properties in Cape Charles, as many families would find it impractical or impossible to rent in compliance with such a rule. I'd like to highlight a few points. One, research shows better alternatives. I've investigated how some other localities have balanced rental occupancy while addressing concerns about overcrowding. Several towns have adopted a two-person-per-bedroom maximum with an additional allowance of two to three persons, accounting for bunk rooms commonly used by multi-vacation, sorry, multi-family vacationers and are larger. Another approach that has proven effective is permitting one room in the rental as a designated bunk room, while still capping the other bedrooms at a two-person occupancy. These solutions strike a balance by preventing overcrowding while still accommodating for larger groups that frequent our market. The proposed occupancy restrictions could flat-out prevent larger families from vacationing here, making it an even less appealing destination for our core visitor base. I urge you to consider these alternative models instead of imposing a one-side-against-all restriction. Two, age restriction is impractical and overly limiting. I understand that the council intends to exclude children aged five or younger from the occupancy count as an attempt to allow for bunk rooms. However, this age limit is far too restrictive to address the reality of family travel, where other children, including teenagers, commonly share a bunk room, and even adult couples are willing to share these spaces for the sake of affordability. Limiting this to children under five overlooks how families travel and use short-term rental spaces. Furthermore, enforcing this rule will be difficult and costly for the town, potentially requiring additional staffing, which only adds to the town's financial burden. Worse yet, it risks turning full-time residents into self-appointed enforcers, potentially creating an unwelcome and hostile environment for vacationers and vacation homeowners. Joseph Williams, 515 Mason Avenue. I would like to submit an official comment regarding this below, if you could please confirm. I'm writing to express my opposition to the proposed amendment regarding short-term rental occupancy limits, specifically the provision that includes children under five years of age from the two lodgers-per-bedroom limit. The age limit is arbitrary, and it implies that a room full of toddlers is permissible, yet it excludes older children who still require similar sleeping arrangements. In our case, we own a four-bedroom house, one of which is a bunk room that accommodates four children. This setup is ideal when two families share the home, allowing children to be together in one room while maintaining comfort and safety. However, under the current proposed rule, a family with slightly older children, such as those aged seven or eight, would be unnecessarily restrictive. I strongly suggest increasing the age limit to 12 years, which would be a more practical approach and align better with how families actually share accommodations. Other localities across Virginia and North Carolina often implement whole-house occupancy limits. Without such specific age... limits without such specific age restrictions. For example, Virginia Beach limits total guest numbers per rental property to ensure neighborhood harmony without imposing age cutoffs. Similarly, in North Carolina, counties like Metlinburg, I hope I said that right, maintain a maximum occupancy for short-term rentals based on overall house size and bedroom count. These approaches provide a clearer, more practical framework for ensuring safety without penalizing families with older children. I strongly urge you to consider adjusting the age limit to a more reasonable 12 years or to focus more on whole-house occupancy, which would offer flexibility for families while still maintaining community standards. Additionally, I am not sure SPR platforms list ages, so it would be very hard to regulate from an operational position. Thank you for considering this alternative solution. Bonnie Moore, 206 Madison. Nearly 100% of the short-term rentals in my home are families. My three-bedroom rental comfortably and safely sleeps eight due to a 200-square feet bunk room, and we often see two families share the rental, with parents each having a room and kids sharing the bunk room. We also see multi-generational families with grandparents and parents in rooms and kids in the bunk room. Capping a three-bedroom rental at six gifts with no possibility of a conditional use permit will seriously impact the visitors we can host. Half my rentals in 2024 would have been in violation. There is a very real possibility that this rule will impact the ability of families to visit Cape Charles and contribute to the town economy. I request that you add the possibility of a conditional use permit allowing for more than two occupants per bedroom. Further, please understand that not all rental platforms allow guests to enter the ages of their party. For example, Airbnb allows guests to enter a count of ages two to 12, but not distinct ages. The rule about guests five and under will be difficult to follow, given that it does not align with the rental policies. Please consider modifying the language such that children 12 and under are excluded from the discussion. Chris Stahl, 209 Taswell Avenue. I have thoroughly reviewed the proposed short-term rental regulations and have some concerns that I would like to address. The proposed regulations treat STR businesses differently from other businesses in Cape Charles. If an STR adheres to all guidelines but against violates the rule, the STR could face fines or loss of license. This seems inconsistent with how other businesses are managed. For example, if a golf cart rental company provides rules and patron breaks them, such as overloading number of passengers sidewalk parking, improper driving, the town does not personalize the rental business, sorry, penalize the rental business. I would appreciate classification on why we intend to impose such different standards on STRs compared to other businesses that also serve vacationers. I am curious about the requirement for STRs to display phone numbers on a public website. How would this impact guest behavior? STR owners typically, sorry, typically know their neighbors. We can reach out to them directly in case of issues. Additionally, I am concerned about the safety of displaying personal information online. Other local businesses such as Cape Charles, Bayhaven Inn, Big Street Inn, and North Hampton Hotel operate in residential areas surrounded on all sides by private homes. Will they also be required to provide a personal cell phone number? If not, why are STRs being held to a different standard? Fairness should not apply to all businesses. I would like to understand the research behind the proposed occupancy, sorry, regulations, particularly how the age of five was determined. With children aged 15 and under, non-drivers in our state were to be exempted, how might this adjustment influence parking logistics at a residence? I propose there would be no difference. It is essential that regulations are based on sound data and reason and gravelly inherent intuition. I appreciate your attention to these matters and your willingness to consider my feedback. While other cities may have implemented similar regulations, this does not necessarily mean they are appropriate for Cape Charles. I urge you to ensure that any rules are thoughtfully considered enforced and enforced across all businesses in our town. Andrew Lessner, 404 Jefferson Avenue. Now, this property is listed under their business, Peach Light Properties. I would appreciate, number one, I would appreciate if the town committee would explicitly list the reasons why these regulations are necessary. Is it parking, safety, noise, et cetera? Does the town feel these regulations as written will resolve, will solve the problems? In my opinion, the regulations as written will not solve any of the problems and will more than likely cause more confusion work for the town staff. Safety. We own the duplex at 524 and 526 Peach Street. Each side of the duplex has two bedrooms. One bedroom has a queen bed, and the other bedroom has a twin and a bunk bed. On our rental certificate of occupancy, the town building inspector has a maximum occupancy of six in each property. Limiting our occupancy to four does not solve a safety issue if the town building inspector allows a maximum of six. Parking. A majority of our short-term rentals are families. The families usually come in one car and usually have two or three children with them. Limiting our occupancy to four does nothing to solve a parking issue. Noise. We clearly state in our check-in instructions that guests need to be respectful to their neighborhood, whether other guests, property owners, or permanent residents. Limiting our occupancy to four does not solve any of these issues. 4.15 C5. Does the age exclusion apply to the maximum number of lodgers per bedroom at the maximum number of overnight lodgers? The way I read the regulation is that the age exclusion only applies to the maximum number of overnight lodgers. So if one of my guests is a couple with a newborn baby and the baby sleeps in a padded play in their room, then my guess would be a violation of this regulation because there would be three lodgers in bed. Six, as an STR host, it is going to be very difficult to manage the age exclusion and clearly convey those age requirements to our potential guests. Seven, also, it's my understanding that if I utilize my property for personal use, then there is no limit on the maximum occupancy. Limiting our occupancy to four when we are a short-term rental and then having an unlimited occupancy when we are utilizing the house for personal use does not solve any of the other problems. There is a very little possibility that these regulations will impact the abilities of families to visit Cape Charles and contribute to the town's and Eastham Shore economy. Here are some proposed solutions. One, utilize the current. That is all the comments that were written and turned down.
All right, so we've heard public comments, we've heard from emails. I'll continue. Anybody else want to speak?
My name is Marvin Crean with Lou Gehrman Realty, 113 Mason Avenue. Just a couple of comments, or comments that have been made. I thought the idea of graduated violation consequences was a really good idea because violations really fall into two categories, nuisance-type things and then serious-type things, like safety violations, so people aren't paying their taxes or whatever. So for the serious things, you could have the certain number, and then you lose your license. But for things like somebody made noise on Wednesday night, or somebody had one kid too many, that should be best handled, in my opinion, by having financial penalties, starting, you know, first time, second time, third time. Pretty soon, the landlord is hit with a pretty big figure, and they will, if the management company is not dealing with it, they, the landlord will be pretty upset and kind of see to it that the management company does it. My other comment is, I don't know how they do in Cape Charles, but in the county, for conditional use permit, first of all, it takes a lot of staff time. Every single thing has to then be reviewed. Then, they send certified notices out to all the neighbors within so many feet, and everybody has an opportunity to comment. And the first thing you know, it's just a free-for-all between neighbors. I think that having it by right and trying that out for a while is the better way to do it. And my comment on occupancy, occupancy will help control parking. I think that probably the five, five, age of five is too restrictive, somewhere between 10 and 12, but I think that the two people per bedroom is pretty good because that's more or less two cars. And most houses here can deal with one car on the property and one car on the street. When you start getting a lot more people, you're just going to exacerbate the parking that everybody's already upset about. And that's my comment. Thank you, gentlemen.
Okay, anybody else? Going once, going twice. I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Make a motion, we close this public hearing.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Any opposed? Okay, so with that, the public is now excluded from any further comments. So as we're discussing up here, there is no opportunity to raise questions or clap or do whatever you want to do. It's not going to happen. It's going to be a conversation now here. So with the public hearing closed, I'll dismiss the, I'll dismiss Town Council if you want to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment. All in favor?
All right.
Motion.
All right, we'll give them a second to... Okay, so for our next agenda item, we have public comments on anything that is not related to short-term rentals. And I'll open the floor to public comments. All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Unfinished business, we now will move into the zoning text amendment. And what I plan on doing is ask for a motion to have this entire document submitted into our records and seconded, not voted on, and then we will go paragraph or section by section as we go through, taking into consideration some of the comments or all the comments that we heard tonight. All right? All right, so with that, can I get a motion then to accept the proposed document that we received in our packet tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion to accept the proposed document that we received in our packets this evening.
Second. All right, we have a motion, second. Any comments on that? No vote? Okay, now, now we'll go in and I'll direct through each of the articles and group them as best we can. Some will take issue by issue, but I think we'll get through at least a discussion on each of the items that were brought up tonight. So I'll start with Article II, our Section 2.9 definitions. It shows there we have a deletion, and then we have two additions. And I'll open it up first for comments. And if there's no comments or no motion to amend, we'll just accept it and move to the next item. So is any comments on the definitions? All right, seeing none, then we will move on to our Article III district resolution of regulations, and this is where we add accessory use, short-term rentals under an accessory use in each of the sections. And the section there, we have printed there 4.15, but it's 4.12, and that's just a noted change, editorial change that we have. So this is, I don't say pretty straightforward, but this allows now short-term rentals to be permitted by right in our individual zoning districts. So now is the time, we had a question with regards to conditional use as opposed to permitting by, by right. And if anybody wishes to comment on any of that aspects.
I thought Marlene's comment about the by right, and maybe we, as a body, as well as council, we take a look at this in another year and see, is that working? And if it is, maybe we continue the by right. Otherwise, maybe we need to readjust that.
All right, other comments?
That seems reasonable to me.
Mr. Chairman, you're saying we change it to a CUP? Now we're keep it as by right as it's written?
Keep it as by right for a year, and then we'll take a look at it in another 12 months. Is this working? If it is, maybe continue it? Or maybe we need to go CUP route? But I think, I think that's a good idea to at least give it a test period.
And I think, Jim, one year is not going to be adequate because it's going to take a year for this all to come into play.
Okay.
We're probably looking at least a couple of years out before you could do that. And I do think the comment about the amount of time that would be spent in public hearings on these things, et cetera, it would have to be a real problem in my mind, overweight to.
Okay. All right, any other further comments on that whole section then relative to amendments to Article III itself? Hearing none, then that's acceptable to move on. We go into now Article IV general regulations across all districts. And just make a clarification in this particular case where we are modifying or deleting A, but in reality, we are moving A into B and striking A and B out and just leaving it as A deals with the 30-day requirement, but if you go to B as we amended it, right away we say accessory dwellings may not be rented as short-term rental. Okay, and we have a definition for a short-term rental. So we're essentially collapsing those two paragraphs into one just to be cleaner.
So, Mr. Chairman, I apologize for being obtuse in reading the language, but it says ADUs may not be rented as short-term rental, and then it says an AD unit may be occupied by any person or persons for a period of no less than 30 consecutive calendar days.
Okay, where, wait, just a second. Where are you pointing to now?
I meant by adding A.
All right.
Right? So I'm just having trouble reconciling the language here.
It says no less than.
No less than.
That means it's not an SDR.
Okay, for no, okay, got it, sorry. All right, thank you.
Yeah, so we're under the term accessory dwellings.
Right.
Okay? The ADU, we're cleaning up language relative to ADUs. All right. Any other comments?
Can you just clarify for me, just because I knew the accessory dwelling unit, is that, that's just a separate building in the back?
That's, yeah, you first will have to have it permitted as an accessory structure, and then if you want a dwelling unit, we have a separate list of ordinances that deal with requirements for that. That's really not covered in today's subject material. All right. Moving on to then the off-street parking comment there, what, what we have in Table 4.5, we're modifying the category description. Now, the current category description is... Now, the current category description is tourist homes, bed and breakfast, and other temporary residents renting a day or a week. And it gives you, as one of our speakers said, you know, one space per rental bedroom plus two spaces for owners. If you go to the top of our table, our single-family residence requirements is two spaces for dwelling unit in all districts other than R1. So in essence, what this table is saying is that in R1, we have none as far as parking requirements go. And the SDRs are an accessory use in the single-family residence districts. All right, let me let that sink in, okay? We, in the future zoning changes that we are also, we're taking the word tourist home out of the category because we don't use that term in any of the ordinance. So that cleans up, and what we wanted to do is clean up this language. Now, when you say, all right, great, so what parking requirements do I have for SDRs? We don't have any. And that was one of the discussion items that we had from the subcommittee up through Town Council. And at Town Council, when going through the draft here, there wasn't agreement on how to address parking, and therefore parking was not made part of this particular proposed ordinance change. It was, we'll, we'll get there when we do the town master parking requirements study. So that's, that's how we got to where we are today. Now, you may not be in agreement with that, but consensus wasn't, it wasn't 100% consensus, but consensus on council was to move ahead and, and push parking into a study on a grander scale for the town.
Is there a timeline for that?
No, it's on our list of priorities, and I'm not sure what number it is. I don't have my list in front of me now, but carry it with me. Parking study is one that we've been talking for a number of years. It's on the list, and we're working our way down like we have gotten to on short-term rentals.
The position of this is we're not changing parking at all, short-term rentals.
Correct.
We're not going to exasperate the problem, and if anything, we're going to make it slightly better with these, you know, occupancy limits.
That's, that's the intent, is to at least tackle occupancy.
But we're not, we don't think we're going to make it worse in any of these things.
Correct.
And be changed.
All right, comments, questions?
So we're kicking the can down the road a little bit?
That's the phrase I used and got published in the Eastern Shore Post, so yes.
I won't say you are kicking the can down the road. You are evaluating the zoning text amendment from Town Council.
Yeah, Town Council, that's right. This is very different from how we've handled other stuff.
Yes, sir.
All right? All right, so let me then go into our new section that deals with short-term rentals, 4.12. And I'll open it up to the purpose and intent. We have four that's listed there. And I'll ask for any comments that you have. We're, item number four, we're tying it into a zoning ordinance dated in November, assuming that we get through this and Town Council then goes through their piece and adopts it through an ordinance. So right now, that's a target that we're shooting for.
So, Mr. Chairman, could I clarify something?
Sure, sure.
So, yes, this is kind of the most, the newest part to this. This is actually added in after the Town Council last worked on this, after I worked with our attorney on it. And that was to figure out the implementation, how do we implement this? The concern was that if we implement something right now, SDRs are already booking for next summer. So, so it's, it's hard. We didn't want, and we didn't want to wait a whole, another year plus. So the, the solution was to have it, implement it now, but give everyone a year to come into compliance and give the town a year to put the infrastructure in place to enforce. Now, this grace period only applies to 4.12, nothing else. So that's the point I wanted to make. So, so now that's the meat of it, right? That's the meat of everything we're doing. But everything else implements immediately. So I just wanted to clarify that point, that it's just for 4.12.
Well, I'll, I'll even clarify further. It's, there's aspects in 4.12 that we will hold people to, they'll be to the fire in the next paragraph. It says business license, pay taxes, and comply with building code.
That's because that's not in 4.12, that's in other parts of the...
Well, it's in here but referred to in other...
Anything that derives its authority from other places, either in the zoning code or in the regular town code, would still be in effect. So, yes, you still pay tax, yes, you still get your business license, all those good things.
Any comments on the purpose and intent? All right, then we move on to permitting requirements, and we'll take each one here one by one. First one, B1, talks about rental units should not be operated until an annual business license is issued in accordance with, as we're saying, our town code for that. Any questions on that one? All right?
I have a, I have a general question.
Go ahead.
Just to refresh my memory, maybe some other people know, Katie. What exactly, for an annual business license, for the approval of an annual business license, is this pretty much a ministerial type of exercise? Or are there other type of, no, it's just paperwork?
Paperwork you filled out, you indicate what your gross proceeds are anticipated to be for the coming year. The calculation does, is done based upon the tax rate set for vacation rentals, and you remit and you receive a business license.
Great, thank you.
With the, I'll add that we will be retooling the, some of the data required for a business license, just to collect the extra data that, that we'll be wanting for a database that we'll be putting together for SDRs. But it's just a couple more lines on the form. It's still largely ministerial.
All right, so speaking of that, and our next item two there deals with the permit issued by planning, and this application would include the following information.
I, I have concerns with item F.
F.
Which will be, which will be publicly available. I think a number of folks made a very valid comment that, you know, the police should have access to it, the town should have access to it, but, you know, I don't need to have access to my neighbor's information so that I can call them. I think of the process should be, I, I think, should go through the official channels in terms of any sort of violation or concerned reporting and not be going, you know, I'm watching my neighbor or watching someone down the street.
So what, what I'm hearing on B2F, your concern is not so much providing the confer, it's making it available to...
I would like to strike which will be publicly available. I do not think that needs to be placed on the town website myself.
Yeah, I agree too. The problem with giving notice to the world is that you're giving notice to the world, good guys and bad guys. And, yeah, I think that's, there's a risk involved there.
And it also depends upon the circumstance. And I have a short-term rental next to me. I know the owner, I've got their number. There's a problem.
Well, it, it's interesting because two comments. One, wanting to go that route, and the person has. And the other one saying, no, I only want to be contacted through the town. You know, I don't want my neighbor to be calling me. So it goes both ways, but in any case, I'm hearing the deletion. And I'd ask you that, to make a motion, and, and we can take it up formally.
I'd like to make a motion to delete the words which will be publicly available in Section B2F.
No, second then.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion on that? I'll ask for a vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, who we have? Acceptance of that. Anything else?
Paul, I just want to make clear, you're, you're voting to amend the main motion. That's all you're doing.
That's for that particular item, yes, yes.
Thank you.
Anything else in two? All right, if not, we'll move to three. Valid for one year, maybe renewed subsequent years. Any comments or concerns there?
A question, did, did the town look through this in terms of workload versus two-years and three-year periods? The workload seems reasonable, but...
Yes, it also, yes, but it also has a practical purpose of when you get to the violations. You, you want to do things on a one-year basis. You don't want to have it, a hit to be more than one year.
Thank you.
And ultimately, when it comes to council in November, we will be asking, what is the impact if adopted as written?
Correct. Council, council, I've told council that this will come at a cost. And so we will, we'll try to bring, bring them a rough price tag when this comes forward.
All right, any other comments on item three? All right? Item four. Any changes require notification to the office within 10 days? Any comments on that, 10 business days? All right, moving on to five, change of ownership now requires notification within 20 business days. All right? Next is an owner. Limited up to five short-term rental units within the town. Now, we had a comment that that may be too high, and I'll just open it up for comments here.
My question is, do we have any entities that own more than five today that this will impact immediately?
Do you know, Katie?
Not anymore.
We, we have some that own more than one, though.
Yes, we do have, we do have some entities that own more than one. We did have one entity that used to own seven properties. But over this past year, they've actually sold all but one item, one property. So, no, there is no, there's no one right now that I can see as exceeding five.
Bill, we're talking with regards to the number, the number an owner can own. So five is being questioned? Anybody have a proposal for change to this? Five too much? Five, okay.
I'm sorry, coming in late. Where did the five number come from?
We picked something that we felt was reasonable, right, right, right.
So we heard one comment from someone who said that five was too much.
Correct.
Correct, right.
And we did at one point have someone who said, they knew longer than seven, but that was one point. Our goal was to just, to stop corporations from coming in and buying into town. So we picked the number five that, you know...
And the seven would have been grandfathered in anyway, so it would have limited any, any other.
But to give an order of magnitude of number picked is, you know...
Yeah. No, I mean, I understand the corporate concern. I mean, I, you know, the scenario that I was thinking in my mind was, you know, what happens, God forbid, if, you know, the economy goes seriously south. And, you know, the first thing that people do in a bad economy, one of the first things that they do in a bad economy is they sell their second home, or they seriously think about selling their second home. And then we're faced with the prospect of, again, making someone who would be willing to buy those homes, right? And it could be a corporation, and I get that concern, I get that concern. But then we're faced with potentially a situation of having a limit on the number of homes you can own, and those homes that are now available just sit there and go unsold. Or because you're, you're sort of limiting what a person can do with those homes. I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think of all possible scenarios because the five struck me as just, my first question was, why five? And I don't have a, I don't have an idea as to what the right number is. I, I just don't.
All right, other comments?
I'm, I'm thinking about that too. I'm okay with five. I mean, I don't, I don't think, unless there exists somewhere an average number.
No.
I, I, I agree that, that keeping it as low as we can to be reasonable because I, I do not want corporations coming in and just buying up whole blocks.
Right.
And just to chime in from a community point of view, why we put a big day number, we felt this was in response to trying to retain that...
Sense of community.
Sense of hometown-iness, yes.
But, but if someone comes in and has six homes or seven homes, the short-term rentals, and they operate them perfectly in accordance with guidelines and the regulations that we're setting up, what is wrong with that?
It is the ordinance that we are crafting now. So these would be the rules and regulations that we are imposing.
But if we get a responsible investor...
And if you don't, and then if you don't, then what?
Right, then if you don't, then what? Then they lose their SDR license, according to this regulation. We already have, we have, we have violations and remedies in place here to do that.
Again, it goes back to trying to preserve the sense of community. So I, I think that one of the speakers mentioned tonight that, you know, yes, we have SDRs because people can't afford to have a second home. They're doing that now until they can move here. That's the kind of, of sense of community we want to try to preserve. Attracting investors to come in and just buy up large chunks of homes as businesses is not the sense of community that we were, that we were trying to pursue.
Well, then maybe investors are pejorative or has pejorative connotation. Let's just say it's an individual. And you can call anybody who's bought a home here and put money and time and sweat and equity into it and invest it. Like a different, I can choose a different word. But I, I, again, I'm just trying to figure out if that person is responsible, if they're rehabilitating the homes, if they're doing everything that we asked them to do, if they're preserving the sense, I don't know how that attracts a sense of community, right? If, if, and if, and if it doesn't impact at all, because it's, it's starting to sound like caps in, in a way. If, if now they own three, and further down the road, they buy three more, but there's still the same amount of SDRs in the town, right? They've just got three, they've just gone to one, two, and a...
We don't manage the number of SDRs. We do not have a cap on the number of SDRs.
I know, I know.
I would not know that yet.
No, I know, I know, but I'm, I'm just following up on my point. Today I own three. Some other guy sells me one, some other homeowner, she sells me one, another person sells me one because they're getting out of town. Now I have six, and I am the model STR owner.
Well, under this, under this ordinance, you wouldn't have six.
Following everything to the book.
You would have five, and you would have additional property that just would not be an STR. Nothing that stops you from not investing in having six properties. You just can't have six that are SDRs.
Yeah, but in my example, I'm saying you own six SDRs now. And I am the model citizen. I am exactly the type of STR owner that this community wants to attract. And if, and if they're not, then you have S, and they lose their license. It, it, so I, I don't know, maybe I'm getting back to the point, to my point of where does the five come from? And why is there a limit in the first place? I mean, it, it shouldn't matter, it seems, if you own one or you own 10. If you're following regulations, if we want to exclude corporations, then fine. Write something in that excludes corporations. But if I'm a good, law-abiding, conscientious STR operator, don't we want more of those people? Don't we want more of those people to operate the SDRs?
All right, so are you proposing a motion for item six? We need something on the table to consider.
I'd like to hear from other members of the planning commission.
I'm fine with five. I was saying, I'd be four.
I'm actually fine with five as well.
Okay.
All right, so moving on. Item number seven has to do with a bill that was just passed with regards to the ability for sublease, leases of subleases in order to turn that unit into a short-term rental with the owner's permission. So this comes right out of state code. Any questions on item six? Any questions on item seven? All right, moving on to additional requirements. First item has to do with one transient occupancy tax. We had a couple of comments with regards to that, quarterly payments and what have you, and I think we've captured, or we will talk on the violations perhaps on that aspect. Anybody have a comment or question on item one? C1. Okay, here are none, moving on to C2. Permitted only in districts as we've already identified in Article 3. That's pretty straightforward, any comments there? Item three is no simultaneous short-term rentals in the same dwelling unit. Now, we talk dwelling units here very specific as to house, because you can have a duplex, a duplex is a fine, is two dwelling units, all right? So, that's why we use dwelling here. Any questions or comments on item three?
This was something that, this is where it was mentioned, you can't have two separate contracts in one house.
Correct. Commercial gatherings? Procluding or prohibiting commercial gatherings?
So, clarification on that. I rent a nice house on the beach, and I stay there, and my child gets married, and I hold the wedding in the back, but I'm actually a short-term renter there because I'm there. Is that allowed or not allowed based on your work?
If it's an incidental use to your rental, you're not charging for it, you're not being paid for it, then yes, you can do it. But you can't offer it out as a venue and be charged to have that wedding there.
But I can offer it as a short-term rental.
It's a commercial activity is what's being prohibited, not, not the use of the property otherwise.
Okay.
All right. All right, occupancy. We talk about the exclusion of the ages five and younger, and it was no magic in picking that. Council homed in on five, wasn't scientific. And there shall be no more than two lodges per bedroom with a maximum of 10. No greater than 10. Go ahead.
So, just a clarification from our attorney. This wording was selected to enable children five and under from being excluded from both the number in the bedroom and the number for the house. So, it's as if they're not there. So, it doesn't, so it applies to both the bedroom and the house, I just wanted to clarify that. And that's, and that was the wording our attorney chose.
All right, so we had questions and comments on the age, and I heard 12, I heard 16, 14. Oh, my notes there, 16, 12, and 15, as opposed to five. Feelings with regards to this aspect?
The comment that was made that...
I'm going to be picky, Ian, you guys speaking to your mic, because we are still broadcasting on Facebook.
The comment that was made about Airbnb software...
Ages two to 12.
Is two to 12, you know, struck me as a real challenge for anybody to manage this, and probably for the town to enforce it. So, you know, I don't know if, you know, I want to propose 12, but I just threw that out for comment, because I was really concerned when you're looking at, you know, a software system that is used by a vast majority of renters. Picking five may be problematic when it's really hard for that short-term rental operator, so...
The age 16 seemed reasonable to me, because one of the reasons why we are concerned is because of parking. I don't know if many parents would allow their 16-year-old to drive a car here, but they might, so. That seemed to be another possible age that we could just bring it up to.
One of the, one of the talking points when we were discussing age two was to 15, 16, 14, no, they're not legally able to drive a car, but they tend to drive off cars. That's not something we wanted to encourage, so, so, I don't know.
But isn't that a violation already?
Right, right, but what I'm saying is, is that if we're trying to, you know, limit occupancy based on age, perhaps 12 might be better, a better, a better choice.
And it's not just limiting occupancy on age, this is really dealing with the safety of the number of sleeping quarters based upon age. I don't want to lose sight of that's really what we're arguing here or trying to resolve here. Because, again, we're saying five and under kids will not count towards a bed count when we're setting the occupancy for the house. And the Airbnb is up to 12?
Yes.
Well, that's the category that it sounds like the software. Let me, let me pass out some research, oh, let me just get my notes. I expected this to be one of the bigger issues, and I went through 36 zoning ordinances in the state to look at what others have done. Always steal, and that's how we did, that's how we got to where we are now, okay? We kind of compromised by looking, I took another in-depth look and updated my table, and, and you can see where we fall in the number. It starts, it starts at the top with Lexington and Stoughton, maximum of two adults per bedroom, period, that's it. And you gotta, you gotta look at the language when they start talking adults, lodges, people. All the ordinances use the terms differently, and perhaps they're the same. But in any case, as you work your way down the table to get more densely populated here, you get down to two individuals per bedroom with a maximum of six. Another one will get two adults per sleeping room with a maximum of 10, including children. Next one I had was two adults with a maximum 10, 10, over 10 approved by town council. We have two per bedroom excluding children with a maximum of 10, excluding children, too. And then we also add the caveat, over 10, we can come to town council through conditional use permit or through planning commission, town council. So, all I wanted to do was give you a mirror of what is out there, and there's no magic bullet, and I'm telling you, each of these localities talked through this issue just as we have. So, all I wanted to do is gather up and show that there's a wide variety of what you can pick and choose, and we happen to pick something in the middle of all this with the understanding of occupancy will help control parking. And yes, I saw a children under age 12, under one of them, actually, that's Maryland, that's one that snuck in there. So, we'll come back to our conversation on the age limit. Do we want to stay with five, or do we want to talk differently on age? Comments? People okay with the current language or sentence there? And if not, what would you alter?
I have some concerns about the max 10, particularly with several people we heard from with bunk rooms. And if somebody is using, let's say they have a four-bedroom or, let's say, a three-bedroom, and one of those bedrooms has two bunk beds, or say, one of those bedrooms has two bunk beds and a trunnel for each, they could, they could comfortably put six children in that room. And then if you've got three additional bedrooms, that would make 12.
Or you up the age five years to something higher.
Right.
And I would not want to go to 18, but...
So, I would express caution in trying to define occupancy based on the type of furniture. That's not, we've gone down that road in the past, and we're moving away from that now. It's based, as the zoning administrator says, based on the safety, based on square footage, based on all these other things. So, you cram as much furniture in there you want, doesn't mean you're going to get more kids in there, it's, we should have some other criteria. So, and so we're moving away from that now, for both, for future occupancy, the code official is going to be using the square footage that's in the code now, and for STRs, as we're discussing now, is we use that square footage up to whatever maximum the town council eventually lands on. And the town council's already made the policy call on two. So, with respect, this is not a normal situation where this is starting here and working its way up, this has come up and it's coming down, so. I think, but it's your responsibility to listen to the, to the comments you heard at the public hearing, and if you wanted to make an adjustment to the age, since that was what was the predominant comment, that might be appropriate.
Yes. We're a family destination. Correct. I'm ready. We're talking, sorry. We're a family destination. We're, part of the things that we heard in the comments today, too, is from one of the women who lives here, is that, you know, we want to attract young families. So, sort of, again, sort of placing what seems like an arbitrary restriction on who counts on five years old as to whether or not they count or don't count as being to a bedroom would seem to be in opposite to our supposed desire to attract younger families versus permanent residents and vacationers. A lot of vacationers turn into permanent residents. Comments have suggested 12-years-old, 15-years-old, 16-years-old. I agree with Paul, I think 18 might be, you know, a little bit too much. But my other question would be, how do we intend to verify these ages? What are we, what are we going to ask for birth certificates? How does the town plan to go in and say, you know, get actual verification of age as to all the people who are, you know, 18-years or under? That seems to me to be, it's going to be a difficult question.
I agree, and the first starting point for me is to ensure that the STR listing has that requirement.
And we're going to verify with what?
You just, on a number of these things, you're going to verify it by neighbors. And you're going to now get into, oh, why have an STR altogether, because now we'll have neighbors talking against neighbors? It's, it's what's going to happen.
I'm not saying how are they going to verify age? Because people are, you're either going to have to get some type of sensitive data, like a birth certificate or records that are kept on file at the school in the district where the child goes to school, or else people are just going to say, no, they're not six, they're seven. It seems to be, it's going to be very tough to enforce, it's going to be very tough to enforce. And I think it's going to discourage people with young kids for long vacation here.
Well, if you were to take out age restrictions, I've seen ordinances that talk two per bedroom plus two.
That's, I was about to say, I'm of the thought...
They can't hear you guys on Facebook.
To modify them, the one that, what you passed out in Middleburg, which says maximum two guests plus two per bedroom, change it to be something like maximum of two per bedroom plus two additional minors. And that addresses some of the issues we heard of the two-bedroom place that can really sleep six, that would address that. It keeps us, because I think the other thing is, do you really want next door, do you really want two families to come down who each have eight kids, and you've got 16 kids in a, in a three-bedroom house, which the current rules especially put it up to 12, you could possibly find a way to do that, right? So, I'm thinking...
So, Middleburg here, just to ask for clarity, max two guests plus two per bedroom?
And I was going to make the max two be two minors. So, it's really two guests per bedroom plus two additional minors.
Well, what's the definition of minor? We're back to age again. Right, is it five years old? Oh, we already have that here.
I guess I was thinking under 16, maybe that's not a minor, because minors are really under 18.
Yeah, so you can, you can go with the next two guests plus two per bedroom, and perhaps continue with the max of 10 overall.
Didn't we have someone in the written comments or in the public comments who suggested sort of a, you know, or pointed out the infirmities of the whole size of this whole approach?
Yes, that's correct, and that's, that could be any of, any of this, right?
Right.
And, and that's why we opened up the next paragraph to being able to use the conditional use permit, and we'll talk about the parameters associated with that. But we've got to put a stake in the ground and say, this is what we want, and we'll hear differences if you have a valid explanation.
But then we'd have to change the conditional use.
Yeah, we'll, we'll, we'll take one paragraph at a time. We're talking the five years and under, and no more than two per bedroom with maximum 10. That's what we have now. What do you want to propose different?
I propose a motion to change the age from five...
Ian, would you, just pull your whole, there you go, put the whole thing up to the edge of the desk, so if you sit back, you can still get to it.
I propose a motion, I mean, a change to change the age from five to 12 to be in support of the software that's predominantly used.
All right, do I have a second?
Second.
All right, I have a motion and a second?
We have discussion on the...
Yes.
You suggested 15, right, Libby?
Yeah, I mean, but I, I would take 15, too. I mean, that's because of, of the driving capabilities and just the possibility of more cars.
I see.
I mean, I'm just trying, I mean, I'm struggling, too, with what the exact age is. What we don't want is, is a house full of college kids.
Right. Well, wait, wait a minute, yeah, okay. Can you be in college with 15?
No, I'm just, no, that's what...
I feel proud of you.
No, this is where the limits per bedroom, the limits per bedroom, okay, but, but I'm only suggesting fit up to 15 to avoid extra cars, if at all possible.
Okay.
But I would be fine with, with either one. I, I do worry about it is, you know, we're trying to attract families here. I agree that it's going to be difficult to enforce this. I think if that's in the lease agreement and they sign it and there's no problems, and nobody complains, then there's no problem. But, but then you've got problems, and you find out that half of them are actually 16 or 18, then, then you, at least you've got a number.
Okay, yeah, I don't, I don't feel strongly one way or the other, I just wanted to make sure it was, you know, clear on what your thinking was.
Again, I just want to...
15 or 12?
Remind people, again, that means you're saying that 15, sorry, 12 and under, you can have unlimited number of those kids come to this house regardless of bedrooms. That's what you're saying. I just want to be very clear what your recommendation is.
But aren't we going to take care of that in the overall occupancy part?
No, that's excluded.
It's excluded from the 10.
They are excluded, so you can have unlimited number of 12 and unders
Yep.
come to vacation at this home with all these adults. Again, the number of adults would be limited at 10, max. Presuming you have the appropriate number of requisite bedrooms.
Mr. Chair, can I pull that motion at this point?
You can withdraw it.
Can I withdraw that motion?
You can.
I think we'd be better off, if, we'd be better off dealing with this in the next paragraph, because I do think we're getting too many people in these houses if you bring a big family and saying if a house is specific, even if it's a three-bedroom place with a big bunk room, maybe we can allow them to come for a conditional use permit to say, this house, even though it's three bedrooms, can handle something different. But I do worry that... But I do worry that we're going to get too many folks in these, and they're not safe, and they're going to be, you know, causing the impact in the town that if we go up to 12 or 15, so that was my reason for withdrawing now.
All right, I'm still on this first paragraph of item five before moving on to really talking about the conditional use permit paragraph. All right, so let's move on then to the conditional use permit for greater than 10 provided, and these are the conditions that are currently shown here. More than five qualifying bedrooms, property can accommodate sufficient off-street parking, and property meets other life safety requirements, which you would expect. So comments on any of those particular provisions you want to talk about?
So the whole idea here is that we're looking at two adults per room, and whatever amount of children that age, whatever that age is, that won't count towards that. So for instance, with regard to the occupancy of 10, if there were no children, that would mean 10 adults.
Yes.
Or 10 college students.
Well...
Yes.
Yes, yes. Okay.
All right, so again, the second paragraph offered an opportunity for people to petition for something different to the limit.
But that was based on the structure being larger than the average structure. We wanted to provide the opportunity for large buildings that can comfortably handle more, and that's why the key term in here is qualifying bedrooms. So if you have more than five qualifying bedrooms, then yes, you should be able to come in and get a cup and get an exception to the rule. If you're going to start allowing occupancy over 10 for regular-sized homes, that's a Pandora's box, and what criteria are you going to use for approval? I mean, it becomes a real problem.
If, yeah, if you don't impose some kind of number of bedrooms. So the only comment I would have here is more than five, I would be more apt to say more than four. Typical houses have four or less, the number of houses, the percentage higher than four will be a certain population, certainly five bedrooms or higher is a smaller population.
Well, it says five because the total max is 10. It's two per bedroom, you get to five. So if you say four, then you have to limit it to eight. So the cup will be triggered at eight versus 10. So that's why it says five, because you get two per bedroom. If you have more bedrooms than that, then you can come in and ask for, ask for it to go up.
Gotcha.
My concern is I've got a two-bedroom house with a loft that sleeps, in my mind, sleeps six, but by this, I am only allowed to have four, the way we've written this, and I have no way to come in and modify and ask for a conditional use to allow that loft to sleep one or two additional people.
Because we have in our zoning code right now the definition of a bedroom, and Katie put it up there for you. So that's the requirement, so no, you can't use a loft, no, you can't use a sofa bed in your living room.
Suggestions for any alterations?
There's a reason why this took two years for this to come to a...
Yeah, really obvious. I mean, at the risk of opening up another Pandora's box, how would the determination be made that the property can accommodate sufficient off-street parking? I mean, are we going to, like, if there's a, if they, if it's a structure that can accommodate 12 or 15 lodgers, do we know, like, how an applicant would satisfy that requirement, or would we just have, it would just be sort of like within the discretion of the zoning...
It would be a case-by-case basis, so as the applicant came before you for their cup, you would evaluate that, and the town council would, so...
The whole difference between the two bodies, the planning commission and town council, what your criteria is.
I mean, generally speaking, the rough rule of thumb would be, you know, an off-street parking spot per bedroom, per bedroom. I mean, that's...
I think it's a stock...
Right, that's the precedent we already have. So I would imagine that's what we would use going forward, but...
Yeah, it does affect them, but we're going to have them.
All right, all right, let's move on then.
Okay, I'm just going to remind you, we are coming to the 8 o'clock hour. Do you want to continue?
I'd say no, because we've got a discussion on violations and answer some of the questions, I think, that came up with regards to trash and signage and what have you. So what I'd ask is that we end the meeting at this point in time and pick it up at our October 30th meeting to continue.
This still allows time to go to the council, correct?
So that would be item six.
This would be at the top of page six.
Yeah, we end here after five.
Could I just, could I ask you a question, Mr. Chairman? I'm just, I'm just curious about something. How did the discussion go in the ad hoc committee about, was there ever any discussion around, and I think somebody recommended tonight, that, you know, you do sort of like do a sign occupancy on a case-by-case basis? Was that, like, had, I thought somebody said that. I thought somebody said tonight that each house is different, every property is different, and that there should be occupancy limits based upon the capacity of the individual property. Was that?
No. Okay, so what we brought to the subcommittee was similar that I brought and shared tonight. I had a matrix for a whole bunch of things relative to ordinances and all the parameters across at least two dozen, and that was used as input. I did see, as I was going through an update, that there was, there was one case that I came across that did have it based on the square footage of the house.
Oh, okay, so, okay.
Where that was factored into it. But that was one of 36 that I reviewed.
Right. I mean, that seems like a Herculean, maybe it's not a Herculean test, but I just wondered if that, if that approach to occupancy, is it ever been considered?
Yeah, it wasn't prevalent, that's what I'm saying. I would have listed it in my table there.
All right, okay.
All right, so with that, announcements, we have our special session on October 30th at 6:00. Just as a general public announcement, Wednesday of this week, we will go into our discussion on a beach master plan.
You mean the town council?
The town council will be, correct?
Yes, yes. Good clarification.
Board, Paul.
That is correct, I can't keep up with these. All right, so I'll take a motion to adjourn. Second?
Second.
Seconds, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?